Chairman, entertain a motion for the approval of the agendas presented.
So moved?
Second.
Moving second, discussion on that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The first item on our agenda this evening is an open container permit application from Jim Davis, Rowena Bland, for six, twelve, seventeen, seven, nineteen, seventeen, eight, sixteen, seventeen, and eight, nineteen, seventeen, Alive at Five at Riverton City Park, 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. So, does Bland, you want to talk to us about that again, or since we're all here now?
Thank you for seeing us again. I got a call from Jim Davis today. He said that he wasn't going to be able to make it because he had a previous commitment at the lodge. He's on the board or something. They're doing the officer election, he has to be there. So, he apologized for not being here. He also called me and said that the gal from injury prevention, can't remember what her name is, had called and showed a sign of support for what we were doing and was offering to help with banding and IDing and giving us use of some things to take care of any minors drinking kind of issues, kinds of things. So, she had offered to help do that, and I apologize, I didn't realize that she wasn't going to be here. I thought I understood that she was going to be here.
Okay.
Ryan Preston from the Hampton Inn, he's on our board also, and he had some, got some information, I'm not sure, I think that it got to you all today, is that correct?
I think this is...
Yes.
And he nods, yes?
So, he would like to say a few things, if that's okay?
Okay.
Did you all have any questions for me, or any other questions for me, or do you want him to speak first and then?
We'll let him speak.
Okay.
Thank you, guys. Again, my name is Ryan Preston, I'm the general manager of the Hampton Inn and Suites, also sit on the board for the Chamber of Commerce, Wind River Visitors Council as well. Couple of things that I actually wanted to address when I was here last week. Mr. Larson said a couple of things. Lance actually said a couple of things that specifically these two documents address directly. One was Lance talking about way, A, is alcohol going to prevent people from coming? There is some, yes, but statistically, this will prove and show with two different documents, A, White Hutchinson articles and Forbes, I think we all know what Forbes is, specifically talks about the generations, the younger generation, millennials, myself, which is a Generation X, and the type of things that we want to go to, the type of things that our citizens actually want to go to and the things that they want to do. Is alcohol something that has to be there? No, but we've tried it. Some of you don't even know that we've actually been doing this longer than Lander has had Lander Live. I've been a citizen of Riverton for four years now, and this was one of my key agendas when I moved here, was bringing something to the city of Riverton that brought people together. It didn't matter if you were black, white, Asian, green, purple, or blue, what do we need to do to bring this community together? And what event, and what thing can we do as the Chamber of Commerce? Because the Chamber's main goal is to do one thing, improve the lives of our citizens through its memberships, through the people that pay into us to support their businesses and our community. Lance, your biggest thing was, are people not going to go to this because of alcohol? Maybe, yeah, but these statistics will prove to you, this is a national average, that more people will attend these than that won't go to them. Because you don't have to go to alcohol, if you don't want to purchase a beer, if you don't want to purchase wine, you don't have to. But if it's available to you in a very controlled setting, in a controlled environment, that prevents the people who, you know, go to City Park illegally, and that our sheriff's office or our city police officers are constantly removing from there, that are doing it illegally anyway, my goal is, hopefully, this pushes them out. If we get an event that brings in this entire community as a whole, the transients will leave, and they will vacate. That's not my goal, that's not what I intended to do, but if we can help clean up the city by bringing everybody together as a whole, that's what I want to do. Lander just celebrated Brew Fest, and you look at, 3,000 people attended that. What does the city of Riverton have that brings anybody together as a whole? I was a softball coach for my daughter when I first moved here, and I was at the softball fields all summer long, coaching, teaching, promoting, sponsoring, it is not only as a parent, but also as a business. And today, I'm still involved with it, heavily involved with it. I am one of the original board members from when we took it over from Mark Stone, that has helped mold it into what it is today. And again, that is phenomenal for our youth, and that is the intent, but what do we have, again, is a community that brings us all together. Does anybody have an answer? Because I don't, and I've lived here for four years.
The fireworks display with the Little League field brings the whole town and Lander and Sashone and Dubois together.
Okay.
Day in the park, during rendezvous, there's the balloon rally, there are a number of activities.
Okay. All good things, and I sponsor every single one of them. I sponsor Little League, I put up a banner at the Little League field last year, I sponsor the Riverton Rendezvous, and I sponsor Alive at Five. We've done it at different locations, trying to bring people together, and I think our best attendance was maybe 50, 60 people at best. For a community-wide event that is free, all you have to do is pay for something to eat and pay for a beverage if you so choose to do it. One of the things that Mr. Larson had talked about was location, location, location last year. What is the one area in this town that no matter where you go or how you drive into this city, you're going to drive past? You come in, you come in from Dubois, you run directly into City Park. You come in from Lander, or you come in from Casper, you run right into City Park. This isn't about trying to promote alcohol or promote alcoholism, this is about, again, trying to give somebody things to do all summer long, multiple times throughout the course of a summer, bring people together. That's what this is about, and statistically, this is what people want. This isn't about statistically getting drunk, this is about bringing everybody together. How can we? And moving forward, as, you know, the baby boomers and even my generation gets older, and the millennials now are all of a sudden taking over, and the generation after that comes in, these statistics are just going to continue to get bigger and bigger. Because the world is changing, the generations are changing, and the different wants and needs of everybody is changing. You know, at the hotel, I'm preparing for the eclipse, and at the Wind River Visitors Visitor Council on what we're going to do with all these people, how are we going to deal with them? If Jason has his one event down at the softball fields, that's phenomenal, but what are we doing with everybody else? I'm preparing to hold an event at the hotel if need be, but I don't want to, if we can do it at City Park, because again, if people just traveling in are seeing Alive at Five take place, and all of what it can be and what I envisioned it to be, they're going to stop, they're going to go there, not just the residents, but people coming to Riverton. And they're going to see this event, and now all of a sudden, these four events that take place throughout the course of a year, whether it be the fireworks, the rendezvous, and the balloon festival, Day in the Park, they're going to stop, and they're going to see this. And the entire envisionment of what our city can be and what I know it could be enhances, and it makes it better. Someone in Cana, or Devon Energy, or Athon, is now trying to bring people into this community, they've got something to promote it with, more than just the few events that we do have. You know, so when you vote on this, I strongly consider this, A, we're not looking to have open containers just out there where anybody and everybody can get it, we're looking to put it in a secured area where if they want to, they have the option to go purchase a beverage, not tequila, not whiskey, a bottle of beer, or some wine, in a very secured area and location. So, I hope that you all understand that that's what our intent is, to bring everybody together as a whole, not to promote something that you've been trying to prevent for years and years and years. Questions?
Sean?
I wasn't here last week, so I'm, kind of got cut out through talking to people. Well, I just have a question for you, why City Park?
Because it is the most visible area in the entire city. So, no matter where you drive, you're going to see it unless you're going down a side street. If you're driving down a main road, like I said, coming in through Dubois, or whether you're going to Bailey's Tires.
So, that's the only reason, just so you can be seen?
It is location, location.
For the 50 people that show up, you want them to be seen by somebody driving through?
No, I want everybody who will now see what is going on, the setup, the teardown, everything that is occurring, the bouncy houses that we're going to have set up, the live band, the banners that will be in place promoting the sponsors and the businesses that are willing to pay thousands of dollars for this event to go on, they're going to see that.
Okay.
Kyle?
I noticed that the, your articles are food, wine, and beer. What type of food are you serving?
Last year when we did everything, we had pulled pork sliders. Jason actually set up an event last year, and I can't remember what he actually served, but again, I think it was hamburgers, hot dogs, brats, we did pulled pork sliders, Rowena did some chicken, I think at one point in time. It's all summer barbecue-type food.
So, that's what's going, that's what you're proposing along with the food, wine and beer?
Yes.
We opted away from the wine and beer and went for a malt beverage permit, so it would just be malt beverages.
Well, the statistics all show wine, beer, and they're including in all the facts that he was stating, food, wine, and beer show millennials are always after food, wine, and beer, that's why I'm asking what type of food you're asking, or are these facts are, or not facts?
I have two, I have two food vendors lined up to come to this, the first two to three events, and then I'm working on more for the later events of those that won't, that can't make it for this event. Sage Brush Grill out of Jackson is one of them that's coming for this event, and the other one is Bunk Barbecue, I believe is the name, I have it written down over there on a piece of paper. So, we were, those are the two food vendors that we have thus far.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, and I apologize again, I wasn't here last week to hear what you guys talked about also, but, so I'm getting the feeling that you're trying to make this where the monthly sort of, they were almost like a business social where other business people got together and did it at the Hampton Inn or did it at...
Business socials.
Wherever. You're trying to get this into more of a broader community-type thing where you're going to have a band people can come listen to and get some food and hang out, and kids can play in the bouncy houses and that kind of stuff. So, it's really changing that from a more of a business social to a community event.
The business socials will occur, I mean, the Chamber of Commerce doesn't typically do the business socials throughout the summer months because of lack of attendance.
Right.
This year, I think we have one this month, I think July we're skipped, and then August, I think we do have another one planned. But again, the business socials will attend, because that is about getting, you know, Mike Bailey in front of Ryan Preston at the Hampton Inn and Suites, or bringing Kyle Larson in to the Hampton Inn and Suites, so he can see everything I have to offer. Or, say I shop at, you know, Big O Tires, get me into your facility so I can see what you have at your facility.
Right.
You know, the business socials is about bringing businesses together to do businesses with each other, that's their intent. This, again, is for, you know, women, children, men, everybody of all ages. You know, this is not just, you know, one type of event, this is everybody, all-inclusive.
The point of the Alive at Five is a community event, and it's always been seen because it's been in different locations as simply a chamber social.
Right.
And we want to change that look, that's, and the feel of it, and that's one of the reasons that we want to go to City Park, is because it's a central location, it's not conducive to being called then just a chamber social. It would be seen more as a community event, all-inclusive, and that's what we're looking to do, is promote something similar to what they do in Lander for their, what do they call them?
Lander Live.
Lander Live. So, that's what we're looking to do, is to make a community event and grow the community event. At this point in time, Mr. Peterson, you had asked about the 50 people, that's what we had in attendance at the events when we were bouncing around, and that would fluctuate quite a bit. One location has proven in more than one situation that if you have a central location where people know that it's going to happen, then you're more likely to attend if you know that it's going to happen consistently, rather than knowing that it's going to happen, but you're not sure where it's going to be this week, or this month, or...
Okay.
Another que, another question?
So, this is kind of a two-part, first, I'd just like to hear what Captain Murphy thinks about this, because he's the one that's going to have to deal with some of the, if there is side effects, because we know how it happens.
Your Honor, I've met with Rowena. I believe that she has been a very responsible business owner for the last 30 years plus. They did do an event that we worked a couple weeks ago up at the college, and I'm more than happy to work with her and this group if you guys decide that's the direction you want to go.
Okay, and then my other one, why not Sunset Park, where everybody else in this community does their alcohol permits?
Again, the majority of it...
Hold on, it would be a location that you could set, it could be there every time, because I read the overview that Jim Davis put together, that is his main thing, is he wants to have it at one point. Why not Sunset Park?
Visibility, you know, I mean, we've had these at locations, you know, we had them at Bar 10, you know, pretty well very visible just right around the corner, we've had them at the Hampton Inn and Suites, you know, so we've bounced them around, we had them at what was Jenny's Roost, you know, right down Main Street, again, attendance at Jenny's Roost was probably one of the better ones that we had, you know, 50, 60 people actually showed up for it, because again, you can see it, it's right there. You're not at the Hampton Inn and Suites right off of the main drag, at the very end of town, you're not at Bar 10 where you have to drive around a corner to be able to see what's taking place. If you're going home from work and you didn't hear about this on the radio, or you didn't see one of our flyers that we're promoting it with...
Or the 30 emails that I get every week leading up to it?
More likely, you're going to see that this is taking place, and if you see it this week and you didn't attend it, you can start asking questions, you can start inquiring, what happened, what was this?
Okay. I don't agree with doing it in City Park, because we've never let alcohol in City Park, I think Sunset Park could be that one location you could do, and that's my thoughts. I know I wasn't here last week, and I don't know if it was brought up, but it just seems, it just seems kind of weird that, nevermind, I'll keep that comment to myself, I just, I don't agree with doing it in City Park. We didn't even give a establishment that's there every day trying to run a business a liquor license because it was too close. And I think we just opened up the floodgates to allowing this in City Park, and Sunset Park, I think, is a viable option. That's all, Your Honor.
Sure.
Grown up here all my life.
Come to the mic, and so people at home can hear you and get your name, okay?
Lenny Kozrock, grown up here all my life, I left for a little bit, go to college. Sunset Park, it's a community park in my mind. We have a City Park, this is the central location, Sunset Park, residences that live in that area can utilize that. It's known as the soccer park, always when I was growing up, that's where all the sports were played, things like that. The hidden, I think, my agenda to it is, is I've never gone to City Park, growing up here my whole life, I've gone to all the other ones, doing events. City Park has to change. This is a step towards the change, the skate park was the correct move. Why not start a precedent of allowing alcohol to be used with the Chamber of Commerce? A group that's not just a party happening, there's somebody that's trying to start events. Let's move in a different direction. We've gone this direction, I've been here my whole life, it doesn't seem to be working out, it's time to change City Park. It's not a permanent thing. Deny it next year, let's start this year, see what happens.
Kirsten, Kirsten, Ms. Watson, before they harass me, Mrs. Watson, Ms. Watson, how many, or Megan, I don't know who can ask this, how many open container permits do we get for Sunset Park yearly? Just a guesstimation, it doesn't have to be precise.
Yeah, five or six.
Okay, so, it's being used?
Nope, I don't doubt that.
You can only use the park about two weeks out of the year around here, because the rest of the time it's freezing out there.
We have great parks, why do we have to singularly exclude one from any other event that the others can be included in? It's a great location, we should use it.
It is, and we are, and we have several things that are going in there. And that's just my opinion, I don't know.
Lance?
I have probably several things, so I have more than two-part question, although one of them was Eric's input, so I'll let that one go. But I do appreciate the content of the report to kind of give the background. It really goes to the, what I brought up last week of being able to get some detail and be able to see a lot more. I appreciate the controlled environment, having served on the Fremont County Prevention Coalition and really pushing for tips training and, you know, bracelets, identification, separate areas, this has that, I mean, I recognize that, I very much appreciate that there's a, it's not a Wild West-type of environment, it's understanding that it's in a controlled environment. I had maybe two related things, the description indicates an or, 8/19 or 8/20, whereas the application only says 8/19, so I wanted to clarify whether the request really was only for eight, besides the other dates, that there was the 8/19 or 8/20 on the description, which would be either Saturday or Sunday?
That is correct, the 8/19 or 8/20 was depending on what would happen with, I didn't want to cross over on 8/19, Jason's event. So, we were doing one or the other, and I apologize, I thought I got the application filled out.
It is, it does say...
Okay.
The application says 8/19.
Okay.
And, but the description has both dates, and then it says or, 8/19 or 8/20, and I wanted a clarification.
Okay.
Which is correct.
I think we were shooting with, I had tried to coordinate with Courtney and Jason and for the Dark in the Park thing, and do something on Sunday night, which would be the 8/20 instead of 8/19, so...
The date on mine is wrong, I don't know if I filled out mine wrong?
Yeah, I got a question for that later, too, so...
But I'm happy, you know, we're all happy to work together and make it so that their event's successful, so my event's successful. Park's a crown jewel of our town, and it's beautiful down there in the evening time, and we should be using it.
Kirsten, how many of those events at Sunset Park were private or more public-based?
Most of them are private-based wedding receptions.
And the last thing, Your Honor, if, just to kind of wrap up, I thought, if you would be open to, if this were to be approved on, and, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name, sir, but the, on a, like, almost a contingency basis, to kind of see how it goes type of thing, and whether or not, you know, to really be clear that if approved, or if I were to vote for it, that there was a clear understanding that this is not an ongoing thing, and that I would ask, I think the council would love to hear reports back after each subsequent, especially for the next couple months, to really get an understanding, some of us very well may attend and be present there, but if not, to come publicly and give a report as the summer progresses to hear, so that it can be publicly stated, you know, number of attendees, the report from the police department as to any concerns that arose, that type of thing, to get an idea of whether or not we would look at these. So, I'm curious about the openness to contingent approvals, rather than approving all four of these in one fell swoop.
We would have absolutely no issues with that, I mean, part of the thing that I was actually wanting to do and hoping to do, that I could definitely report back to everybody here, you know, and answer some of your questions in terms of, you know, A, are we promoting something, which I think is kind of what Sean is fearing, is, you know, if we allow this one... know, if we allow this one time, we have to allow it for everybody. Well, the difference is, no, we don't. The Chamber of Commerce is something that is part of this community. But from, answer your question, is we can report back on anything you're asking for. What our sales are from a food perspective, what our sales are from an alcohol perspective. You know, obviously, the police chief can actually report back to any incidents that took place. But one of the things that I can do is to take it one step further, is I can track and promote an outside perspective. You know, I can promote every single one of my guests that stay at my hotel, which, you know, I serve 23,000 guests every single year that are not residents of this community, that ask, what is there to do in this community? And again, to back to Sean's point, if they're driving down Main Street, when they're coming back from Devon Energy, they're going to see it. I can report back to you what my guest feedback are saying. You know, what do people that don't even live here think of this community event? I have the ways and the means to track that type of information, to give you reporting that says, this is a valuable asset to our community, or this is a waste of our time from the community standpoint.
You said, how many of these have you had since you've started doing the Alive at Five?
I think we've had fifteen or sixteen.
Fifteen or sixteen of them. Have you always had alcohol at them?
Yes.
And was the attendance the greatest, then? Was it about fifty? Is that-
At our max, like I said, I mean, I think the last, the best one we did have, from what I can recollect, is when we had it at Ms. Jenny's Roost, which was right off of Main Street. And I think attendance was right around about sixty, somewhere around there. And every event we've had, we've had alcohol. So, you know, we've gotten the permits from Rowena. You know, Jason has definitely helped us serve as well, and even his have turned out really well, so.
Have you, you had mentioned having the bounce houses here and everything is the plan, if you do it at City Park?
Yes.
And then, when you had it at Ms. Jenny's Roost, did you have them, like, in the parking lot or something?
The other really successful one that we had was also on Federal, and it was at Porter's, actually, last fall.
I remember seeing that.
Yeah.
I drove by.
There you go.
I didn't stop. I drove by.
That's okay.
Have you had a lot of families that have turned out, and kids that have been using the bounce houses, or have they been kind of-
To say that is an understatement. I mean, it's, when we have the bounce houses, I mean, when we did the very first one several years ago at the Hampton, we actually brought in a dunk tank, and the police department actually had officers come out and man the dunk tank. And it was phenomenal. I mean, the kids loved getting the police officers wet. That was probably the highlight. But the bouncy houses were nonstop.
And I see what you're saying in terms of, you know, why don't we just try it and see what happens? Have you just tried maybe doing it at City Park without alcohol to see what your attendance is like and see if it makes a difference?
Nope.
I mean, we haven't done it at City Park yet.
No, we haven't.
I think that might be a worthwhile thing to try. We're talking about trying things.
But what is the difference between trying it with or without?
Oh, I think when we've had a place, we haven't had a lot of alcohol for quite a few years, there's a big difference to me.
But if you do what y'all always did, you're going to get what y'all always got.
Mm-hmm.
Mike? Okay, I guess, I get the feeling that everybody thinks that this is going to be, you know, open kegger brawl type of a scenario, and if they're going to keep a, you know, a fenced area like they do at the fairgrounds when they do their beer garden, where you have to be in a defined area, you have to have a band to get in, you can't leave there. And I think this is extremely controlled, and I think, again, I got to commend you for trying to come up with ways to bring events to the city. And I think my objection to not approving all of them in advance would be, I think it's going to take a fair amount of planning to line up bands and caterers and some of this stuff. If you're going to make it that size of an event, it's going to take some prior planning. And so, I guess you need to let us know how quick ahead you would need to have that, so that, you know, if we're going to have a good band come, that's going to help the attendance. And so, you know, we can't tie both arms behind their back and expect you to have a great turnout if you only know month-to-month, for example, if it takes two months to get a band tied down. And so, you know, I think it could be a great thing. I think, as long as the police department feels that they can staff it properly, and that it's going to be controlled, you know, again, I don't, I've expressed in the past that I don't think City Park's problems come from responsible adults acting in a lawful manner, doing, you know, things in a responsible fashion. That is not our problem with City Park, okay? Our problem is from people doing illegal activities that they're not supposed to be doing. That's where the problem comes from. So, to me, I think this would be a positive thing for City Park, you know, or other parks. Again, as long as it's done in a controlled environment, it isn't like we're saying, you know, you're going to have an open keg at City Park thirty days of the month. We're talking a once-a-month kind of a thing. It can be an event that people plan for. It can be a good draw to the city. I know Landers had fantastic results from their Lander Live. We sponsor that also in Lander, and, I mean, they have great turnout, and, you know, I don't think they have any major issues with people, so.
We're looking for a few more sponsors.
I knew you'd call.
Just throwing.
So, so let me, Kyle and I had an opportunity to go over to City Park and walk around. And so we looked at the old swimming pool area that's all fenced off there, and has got the old skate park equipment in there. And the Job Corps is dismantling that. Several of those pieces are very large, and they'll have to be cut apart to get trucked out of there. But we're trying to get that arranged, so that that'll get cleared out. And so, that's mostly concrete. There is some gravel in there. And so, we kind of got to looking at that, and we've talked about this as a, this is an idea, okay, is that what we would try to do is, there's obviously enough power in that building to share, because it ran pumps and all that kind of stuff at one time. And so, we should be able to tie into that. And we're thinking about running an electrical line along the fence, so that we would have power against the back of the building. We'd have power out around the fence on the outside. We'd be able to turn it on and off inside the building, so that, you know, it'd be available for special events and that type of thing. And then, we would have a fairly flat, unfortunately hard and hot surface to operate on inside that fenced area. But we could break that up into, you know, food vending and that type of thing, and would have an opportunity then to partition part of that off as a beer garden area. And so, we thought that might be rational. And then, because we put it inside the fence, then we can still say that the grassy part of City Park is still not open for alcohol. And so, you know, if we can, if we can make a distinction like that, then maybe it's possible for us to still try to maintain the alcohol-free nature of the park, while at the same time providing some people with an opportunity to get a beer. And so, I guess that was the discussion that we had. I don't know that we've been able to make any progress on finding out what that electrical upgrade there would cost. Obviously, if we want to do something like that, we'll need to put in some kind of a gate between the grassy area and the, you know, around the band shell there. There is a, there is a post there where the fence kind of comes to a splice. And so, it might be possible right there to put in a gate without too much difficulty, or maybe even somewhere else down the line, just cut a hole in and build a gate in there that would work. And so, but it'd give us a point of control. It'd be close enough to the band shell that where the band was set up, people could sit there and enjoy. I think it'd be possible to, you know, to do some anchor bolts into the concrete to hold a tent up. You know, those kinds of things. So it wouldn't be impossible to do that. We, Courtney and I visited about a little bit, and I thought, gee, wouldn't it be neat if we had a nice mural on the back of the swimming pool?
Oh, there you go.
See? Okay, so there's, I think there's things that we could do at City Park that would help to spruce City Park up a little bit. And then, the other thing that I like about this is that we're talking about a five to eight, five to nine PM kind of thing. And so, we can still close the park at dark. And so, then that helps us with the nighttime activities in the park. And so, that it'd be a pretty controlled, pretty limited use of alcohol under certain circumstances, and especially if we were going to go to a two-drink limit or something like they did at CWC, to where we were simply going to avoid anybody getting enough alcohol on board that they got beyond enjoying themselves a little bit. And so, that seems to me like that wouldn't be a terrible thing to do.
Tim Kenaway, you brought up the same thing that Kyle did last week, which is what prompted me to do all the research and find all the numbers and statistically show what people want when they hold a little event, is, you know, why not try it? Because statistically, the millennials and Generation X, forty-seven to forty-eight percent are more likely to attend based on having alcohol or beer or wine. And the statistics just continually show that is something that's off. And if we have it, just like the mayor was saying, in a very controlled setting, what is the harm in allowing it to take place?
I think, and one of the things that, I don't think Riverton always necessarily falls within your typical statistical means all the time. People that are going to live in a small town, it's a different brand of people, honestly.
Population of 600,000 people.
Yeah.
I'm here, so.
But I guess my point is, it's one thing to look at the statistics that you've presented, and it's another thing to be able to, you know, actually have done it and seen what happens. I'm not saying I'm completely against, you know, any idea of doing anything like this. I mean, as a matter of fact, I, I think it's great that you're, what you are trying to do with the Alive at Five program. I applaud that. And I think it's a great thing to be doing. I just don't know if I'm ready at this point to say, let's go do it at City Park. And, and I mean, maybe if we had had this at Sunset or in another public venue, rather than at businesses before, and we could see how it went, you know, did it improve? How did it help? If we had had it without alcohol in City Park, and we could see how it went, then I might be a little bit more willing to say, let's do it. I mean, and we've also got, like I was saying, years of not allowing it at City Park, that if we want to jump into that, I want to have everything I can to say, now's the time to do it. And I just don't think we're there yet. It's nothing against the program. I think it's great. It's nothing against the idea of doing it in a park. I think that's a very, very good idea, and having a steady place where it is. I think you, you did a great job of identifying an issue, which has been an issue for me. You know, when I've read about it, I've always been like, well, I don't know where it is. I mean, you don't remember, if you get it associated with a place, it makes it so much easier to have people that will be, go there again, be repeat customers, so to speak. So, I think the issue that I'm having is just, there's still just a little bit here. I just don't feel like it's the right time to jump into it, from my viewpoint.
Can I offer a local statistic?
Sure.
So, this is comparing the local hotels, okay? So, you look at the casino, it was a dry casino, but has the very large convention space, okay? When you look at leisure-type events, okay, throughout the entire last year, the casino had dozens upon dozens of inquiries about holding weddings, personal-type events in their convention centers, and they were denied, turned down, because they don't serve any alcohol. But yet, you go to the Holiday Inn here locally, and you look at the amount of weddings that are handled here locally, and you're talking numbers of thirties to forties in the yearly time, just because, A, the two facilities that can hold them, one doesn't, the other does. That is a local statistic.
Are we to the point where we could have a motion? I guess, oh, let's see. I have one more question. Okay, you said something about malt beverage permit?
Yes.
And what I see here is an open container permit. Is there a difference between, so what's the difference there? Could we have, if we had an open container permit, would that allow wine? Or are we just talking beer?
Malt beverage, Your Honor, is just beer.
Just beer?
Yes. Open container is for any alcohol.
Any alcohol.
We would not want hard alcohol. We would just want beer and wine.
The malt beverage, okay, now, this is, I'm, I'm not real, the malt beverage permit allows for, correct me if I'm wrong, the beer companies sell beer, they sell something called White Claw, which is a seltzer, five percent alcohol-like beer, no carbs, no calories, gluten-free. It's a going thing, I was just saying. And they also do wine coolers, and I believe those all fall under the malt beverage permit. Is that correct? Because they're sold from the beer companies.
So, do we have an open, do we have a malt beverage, or do we have an open container permit? I'm reading open container permit.
Your Honor, can we clarify that? We cannot issue a malt beverage permit unless they have the open container for the venue that they like it for. Malt beverage permits do not come before the council. Do they?
No.
Okay, so, so we're going to get a, so we're talking about an open container permit here, and then we're gonna, so I think we can, see, I think we can put some, I think we can put some limitations on it, you know, as we make that motion and say, yeah, okay, but this is, this is how it works. And then see if we can, if we can make it, if we can make it work that way. I don't know. What, Mike? You ready for a motion?
I was, I was going to make one as well, so I'll defer to Mike. He was the first stepped up.
Make a motion, Mike. Your Honor, I would move that we approve the open container permit application for the Riverton Chamber of Commerce, Jim Davis and Rowena Bland, for six twenty-one, seven nineteen, and eight twenty, for Alive at Five, Riverton City Park, from five to eight PM, for beer and wine only, no hard liquor.
I think they wanted eight sixteen as well.
Do you want eight sixteen also?
Yes.
Okay, and eight sixteen. Okay.
So we change from nineteen to twenty?
Yeah, that's what they had decided was the correct day.
Okay.
Second?
Second. Okay, that's what I was listening for.
I was waiting.
Okay, all right. Now, we have, we have a motion and a second. Is there, is there any discussion?
I would be prepared to offer a motion of an amendment to add a two-drink maximum to that motion. That was one of the things that the college did and got the support from the foundation director that's part of the packet. And I think there's some, I think it was even mentioned, that that was kind of a concept that was being considered. So, from that same perspective, I would move to amend the motion to add a two-drink maximum to that.
I would second his amendment and accept the question. Been moved and seconded. Discussion on the amendment.
Are we talking two-drink minimum, two drinks, or two drinks of alcohol, beer, two drinks of wine?
Two drinks.
Two containers, two, two-
Like our chicken rule? Twelve, six ducks, six chickens.
Maximum of two. Not, not two of each, two total.
Two total.
Two total. Okay. Any other discussion on that amendment? All right?
Are you waiting for a second?
No, I've got it.
You got it.
I got it. Okay, all right. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Okay, so now we're back on motion. Any discussion on the motion? Your Honor, again, I think this would be a good thing to try. I think it's got the right amount of controls in place.
I think it's got the right amount of controls in place. I think by letting us try it this summer and getting a report back from them on how it works and getting a report from Chief Murphy on, on if they have any problems, this would be a good test bed for us to try this, and I think it'd be a great promotion for the city of Riverton. Again, it gives people something more to do, which we constantly get people asking, oh, there's just nothing to do, which I don't necessarily agree with, 'cause I'm busy enough. I think it does give us places to, you know, things to promote for people that are visiting to do, and it's the kind of things that people wanna do when they go visit another place, so.
Okay.
Your Honor.
Lance?
And I just would like to reiterate, I, I would like to see shortly after each event, a, a report. I, I think that's a, you know, whether, here at the council, to, to come forward and, and just give a report on the previous month's event and whether it, you know, have the police department give a, a report, have the organizers give a report, just so that we're publicly expressing the benefit of this throughout the summer, or the lack thereof, if, if that's the case.
Okay, so, so help me, Rowena, could you come and tell me the process here? So at the, at the college, so obviously you sell the alcohol, right?
Yes.
Okay, and, and so then somebody comes in and shows their ID, and then you give them an armband?
Uh, yes, we can do that.
Or?
Well, if, if we're gonna do a two-drink.
Two, two-drink.
What we did at the college was the gals from the, a couple of the girls from the college, Becky, Ruth and Beck, and another gal, and I don't know what her name was, they sat at the gate of the, going into the beer garden area and gave the tickets to the people, checked IDs and gave tickets, two tickets, to the people coming in. So they took on part of that responsibility because they had been tips trained and it was their, it was their party, so to speak, so they wanted to make sure that they had their control. So they were checking IDs and giving tickets, so we took tickets for their drinks and got, and when their two tickets were gone, then they got no more drinks. If you have no tickets, you get no more drinks, so that's what we will do.
Okay.
If any of the council wants to come down and sit at the gate and check IDs and give out those tickets, I'd love to have you up.
Okay.
That'd be better than a dunk tank, I think.
And Ryan was talking about the police officers being the star. He was the star of the dunk tank when I was out there last year, so just saying, he was quite the star.
You were, you were dunked?
Yeah, he was on the dunk tank last year. Was trying to keep the kids busy and he did a good job.
Yeah, okay. So, so Chief?
Your Honor?
Okay, so, so as, so we have this, we have this limited event in City Park, okay? And then the event's over, does that leave you then with some enforcement challenges for the park the rest of the time?
I don't think so. I will get with Rowena and the chamber if they hire a couple of additional officers to work it. I think that we can clean up pretty quickly and not have those issues.
Okay.
I will get it in the budget. And the sponsor dollarship's going up.
Yes.
In early, Mike, if you're gonna.
And maybe, and maybe the price of the beer, huh?
Yeah, might, yeah.
Okay, all right. So that's, those are all things that we can think about.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other discussion?
Your Honor, I just, I do wanna emphasize the importance of, and I, you know, Rowena has specified some of the things in the application, and I think just clearly identifying that the more controlled this environment is, the better, not the less controlled. It goes to Mike's conversation of, of, we're not talking kegger in the park type of thing. This is a very controlled environment, well-supervised by the organizers, and, and I, I think that's what makes this different. It's also, I, I believe, different as, as a member of the community who came and protested the liquor license for the business next to the City Park, and now being on the city council. I, I believe this is different. I believe this is a different scenario, so I'm, I'm ready to vote.
Okay, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Three to three, huh?
You gotta do your job, Mayor.
Let's, uh, let's poll.
You wanna stick your hands up? All in favor?
Aye.
One, two, three. Opposed? One, two, three. All in that interest?
I'm, I'm, I'm really caught. I would like to do it. I really would. But, you know, I don't see the, I don't see the skateboard people over here. I don't see the, the splash pad people over here. That's my problem. If I could see some skateboarders, hey, that's a great idea, that'll help us, or the splash pad people. I don't see them.
But they're all some testing it.
When the splash pad had their fundraiser, guess what they did?
They held it at an event? Tell me, they held it in the park?
No.
And they sold there in the park and we didn't know about it?
No.
Alcohol at their fundraiser, because guess what? That's, that'll show up.
They, they didn't do it in the park, 'cause they had to have alcohol.
It opened the checkbooks up.
Yeah, to open the checkbooks up.
And I, and I think this was an open public meeting that was advertised, and I think in the past, we've never had any problem with somebody coming and telling us what they think. I think if they had a problem, they would be here.
My, my only, Your Honor, my only concern is just, we open up City Park to now, what makes, nothing against the Chamber of Commerce and you, but what makes this group different compared to, I'm gonna pick on Pat, 'cause he's out there, CES wanted to do some kind of a social out there to raise money in City Park. What makes it different?
Yeah, we didn't.
They're not in front of us.
We didn't have.
Exactly, but I mean, we've turned down how many before, and when, when's the last time they've had an open container permit awarded to City Park?
Never.
Never.
But we've, I don't remember ever having one in front of us.
But we didn't have any trouble, we didn't have any trouble turning down the bare-knuckle boxing guy from getting his alcohol permit at the armory.
I, I wasn't on then. I, I'm just, my thing is, is that if we open up a new, I don't even know what the right word is. I, I think it's a great idea, don't get me wrong. I think it's an awesome idea, and I think it's great if it's gonna drum up people to bring the community together. Because I've been to one of the functions that, the Alive at Five, is that what this one's called? I gotta make sure I'm not, make sure I'm not using Lander's name, so I don't get yelled at.
That would be Lander.
I've been to one, and I walked in and I looked around, and I was like, okay, I'm going home and spending time with my wife and kids, this is, this is bad. So, I mean, it wasn't something that I thought, oh, I could go out there and I could network and I could meet some people, and there was like three people in a corner, and there was four people in another corner, and that was about it. So.
Okay, I'm, I'll, I'll, I'll break the tie, I'll say yes.
Okay.
Good.
I'll, I'll support it.
Thank you.
Good luck, let us know what we can do to help.
I, I absolutely will. I need people to come and check IDs and hand out tickets at the gate, so before, I'm kidding. But I did want to address Mr. Larson, if that's okay. You said that you didn't see any opposition. I kinda feel like seeing how it was advertised, if there was opposition, they would be here. So I would think without opposition, that would be enough said, maybe?
They had an opportunity to voice the.
That's, that's what I'm saying, if there isn't any opposition.
We'll try it. We're gonna try it.
I, I appreciate that. I appreciate that, so I'll sit down and check. Thank you.
We're gonna try it. Okay, the next item is an open container permit application, Bar Ten, Jason Hawk, music show at the softball fields. Mr. Hawk.
How we doing tonight, Council?
Well, about half and half.
It's almost eight o'clock.
Right, right, yeah.
It's almost eight o'clock, and we're on number two.
Revity is appreciated.
Council, I'm Jason Hawk, I have Bar Ten, and I'm looking for your approval to do an event during the eclipse. The date is incorrect on here, the time is correct. I'm looking to do it on Saturday night, the nineteenth. We're looking at doing it down at the softball park. I've talked to both the, the guys that are running the softball park, and they both have my support. They don't have any tournaments going on at that particular time. Talked to Chief Murphy about this as well. What we're looking at doing is, is throwing a music event down there. We wanna have the band right at home plate and use one of the dugouts for a barbecue and have one of them for a bar. Have it, an event that people can come in and bring blankets in the outfield and spread out and enjoy a nice barbecue and a night of music and socializing, and we'd like to end it with a fireworks show. That'd be fun for our city and good time to do it, and good location. It seems to be all contained and, yeah, what questions do you guys have for me to?
Let's, let's start this with a motion.
You're gonna go straight to the motion.
Your Honor, I would move that we approve Jason Hawk and Bar Ten for a music show at the softball fields on eight nineteen of seventeen, from five PM to ten forty-five PM.
Second?
Been moved and seconded. Okay, now, do we have discussion, Mr. Godey?
Jason, I was curious if you could clarify, in your description, I, everything on the night, eighteenth, that you wrote on the eighteenth now is on the nineteenth. I got that, I understand that. But there's also reference to Friday and now Saturday, 'cause you're changing the date from Saturday to Sunday, so, so it being a.
From Friday to Saturday.
So from Friday.
There's a, on.
Yeah, it looks like they had me down on Friday, the eighteenth.
Okay, Friday, the eighteenth.
Which it really needs to be Saturday, the nineteenth.
Okay, and so you're, you're, actually, your description's wrong, too, that, and I wasn't looking at my calendar to be able to, to clarify with that. But there is a reference to a Friday, as well as a, like a NASA demo and movie and barbecue on another day.
You know, that's, you know, we, we've been trying to find somebody, and, and this night, we're looking at maybe doing Sunday night, not. And we figured if we already had a stage set up down at the softball park, that we would try to maybe get some people down there to talk about the eclipse, maybe do some demonstrations, and then follow it up with like a movie night down there. And find like a cool apocalyptic-style movie and, and, and do something.
War of the Worlds, or.
Like, like that, for that night. And that one really hasn't, I, I, I don't have as, I, I need more planning on that particular one.
Okay, so this, this request specifically is just for the concert, the, the music night on the nineteenth?
Right.
Nothing else included?
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that, Your Honor.
Thank you. I have a question. What process are you going to have to, to limit the amount of alcohol that comes into the venue from outside?
Um, well, you know.
So if we're gonna try to, if we're gonna try to control the alcohol inside, okay, if we're gonna go, if we're gonna limit to two drinks or something like that, and try to, and try to control the amount of alcohol inside, are we, do we have some way to avoid it coming over the fence?
Well, you know, I, I, I did pick the, the softball field because they have the high fencing on the outside of this particular field that I'm looking at. And, you know, we will have, I'm, I'm gonna have to have, you know, at least five people that are just kind of walking around the place and just making sure that people are doing what they're supposed to be doing, and that there's not things going over the fence or through the fence or something of that nature.
Chief?
Your Honor, I just want to.
You moved right up to the mics.
I did. So we have worked with Mr. Hawk for the last several years, the Friday Night Cruise. He always does a huge street dance. He's always worked very well with us. We've given him some ideas. He's always gone with those, and I can tell you that we've never had one issue. I've always been down there for every Friday Night Cruise that he has had these, and we've never had one issue from his patrons.
Tim?
You thinking five will be enough? I mean, just considering, that's a pretty big, we're talking a ball field, right?
Well, you know, as we're selling tickets to the event and as it grows, then that might change as well. I, I agree with that, that, that might not be enough.
But you're, you're aware, of course, of just the difficulties that that'll pose, and you're ready to address them?
Absolutely.
My main question.
Absolutely.
And then what about, I mean, any damage that could be caused to the softball fields just from using it in a manner of which it is not accustomed?
Right, right, yep, yep. I can, I can, I can see your concern there, and, you know, I do carry an insurance policy with me that I will bring down there, and I, I do what I can to make sure that the field is in good shape for, for up-and-coming events and put my time directly into making sure that it happens.
Your Honor, do we have, maybe this is directed to Kyle, any indication of conflicting events around that time at the softball fields? Any tournaments planned, any, any, anything else that we know of that's going through?
Your Honor, as far as the city goes, we do not, the, the best indication is coordinating with the softball association, which, which he has done.
Okay.
So have we ever had alcohol at softball fields?
Every night, I think they have it down there, don't they? Oh, I'm sorry.
Aren't they, isn't that a beer league over there at most nights?
Okay, all right, so that isn't anything strange. All right.
Your Honor, I did note on that Jason has requested spraying for mosquitoes on, around that. Is that a?
I'd, I'd love to have that happen, and let me know what I can, yeah, I, I just, I, I just, you know, I, I don't want people to suffer that time of year. I mean, it's a wet season, and I, I think, you know, they'll, they'll be bad by the end of the year.
I'm just curious whether or not that can be a part of, of, or if it's, I'm not sure what the schedule is for that end of town, but it is part of the information request. It's not specifically on the application, but it is in the information, so I wanted to make sure we were clear as to whether or not we can do that or we cannot do that.
Your Honor, to address the mosquito spraying, it will depend on whether or not we're double spraying at that time. As you are aware, when we have positive tests for West Nile, we do double spray, otherwise we do a single spray. Depending on the evening and then where our schedule lies, I don't think I can answer that right now, but we can look into it and see if it coordinates or aligns with the regular weekly schedule in that area. And if not, we'll have to see if we have a person available to do an extra spray. It will just depend on the situation.
Okay. We can, we can always, we can always hope this will be like 2011, where all the mosquitoes were washed down to Boyson.
Yeah.
So that was a big flood year, and all the mosquitoes got washed to Boyson. We had very few in Riverton, and it was a pleasant place to be, so.
Hopefully that's the case.
Hopefully that's the case, okay? Other years, other years. Other years, other years, you want to wear your heavy clothes. And lots of, and lots of repellent. Okay, so even, you know, even then, you know, it may still be kind of buggy. All right? Enough? In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mayor votes aye.
Thanks, Counsel. Appreciate your support.
The next item of business, public hearing, consideration fireworks permit application for the Riverton Little League. Report, please, from the city clerk.
Yes, Your Honor. The city clerk's office has received a fireworks permit application from Riverton Little League for their end-of-season celebration, which is on June 29th from 9:00 PM to 10:00 PM. And it is located at the Ron Saban Little League Complex. The fire chief has written a letter of support for that event as something that happens every year and has for several years. So staff is recommending approval.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion to open public hearing. Your Honor, I would move that we open the public hearing.
Second.
Moved in second and open the public hearing. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. I now declare the public hearing open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium, identify yourselves for the record.
Your Honor, seeing as we have nobody coming forward, I recommend we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I now declare the public hearing to be closed. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the fireworks permit application.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion.
Your Honor, I'd excuse myself from this vote since I am on the application.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. Next item of business is public hearing, consideration of resolution 1357, fiscal year 2017-18 proposed budget. Interim city administrator's report, please.
Yes, Your Honor. This is the proposed budget for staff for fiscal year 18. It's a balanced budget of $26,256,347. This is including 11 funds throughout the city. And I guess, I don't want to be redundant, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them on the budget. But this is staff's recommendation for fiscal year 18. Resolution number 1357.
Would the city clerk please read resolution 1357 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. A resolution providing for the 2017-2018 budget for the city of Riverton for the fiscal year beginning the first day of July 2017 and ending the 30th day of June 2018 inclusive.
Chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Been moved in second that we open the public hearing. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. I now declare the public hearing to be open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record.
Your Honor, I don't see anybody in the public that looks interested in the budget. I'd move we close the public hearing.
Been moved?
Second.
Seconded. Are you keeping up, Megan? Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. Public hearing is now closed. Chair would entertain a motion to approve resolution 1357.
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I would just like to take this chance to say thank you publicly to Courtney, all the senior staff, and everybody else that was involved in working on this. It was a great opportunity for us to learn and to see. It was very transparent, so I am grateful for that. So, thank you.
Go ahead.
One question. Tell me, what's a 9/11 fund?
Your Honor, statutorily, 9/11 funds have to be kept separate. And those are the funds that operate our 911 system. So the funds that we receive off of telephone bills come into the fund and are distributed through the state to the county, and then we receive them. So those 911 funds have to be held separately in a fund. So on your bill, it's 75 cents per month that you pay to 911. Did you know that?
Thank you. And that's the money, the money is used to maintain the computer database and the system for people who live where, so when the phone rings, they can see who they're supposed to be talking to and know the address. Okay, and so then that means that there has to be somebody because people move in and out all the time. So there's somebody who's constantly working the, all the city accounts with water and that type of thing, and see who the customers are and the addresses, property owners and that type of thing to get that information. And Chief, the information that you get is reliable half the time?
Your Honor, I'd say about half the time. That's correct.
Okay, but, but maybe the actual location comes in pretty good?
Your Honor, the location is accurate. It's the name that comes up that is not quite so accurate.
Okay, maybe the last guy that lived there. Okay, all right. But at any rate, that's, that's how it's used.
Your Honor, I believe that is only landlines, not cell phones. I believe the cell phones go to the county. Mia? Thank you.
Okay.
So we get no money from, from the county for cell phones?
No, sir.
How do we fix that?
We don't get a lot of money then with only, with the landlines.
So it's not a big fund.
The county's got this thing figured out, don't they? They don't do a lot.
Five more years and there won't be any money in that.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe we could get to a public event and serve alcohol and raise money for 911.
Looking for sponsors.
Okay. All comes full circle.
It does.
Okay, that's terrific. Okay, all right. So any other discussion on the budget?
Your Honor, I had had a question I discussed with the chief at the end of our last meeting. One of the things that I've been thinking about, just with a lot of the law enforcement, anti-law enforcement things that have been going around, and we have, I think, a very high-quality police department here. And I was discussing with him, would it be something that they would need to have money in the budget? One of the things I've been thinking of to protect our officers is body cameras. We have a lot of police departments around the United States that have been utilizing them. It's helped in keeping officers, I think, safe from allegations that could result in the officer having significant charges levied against them, losing their job, all sorts of things. Also aids in the prosecution of folks who are committing crimes. And in speaking to the chief, he had said he thinks that there would be grant monies that would make that possible and didn't think there was any need to address it in the budget. But is that still sounding like that's the way things are?
Your Honor, that is correct. There are several federal grants out there for body cameras. Several.
So Courtney, I'm right to say that if we did get that grant, it'd take a budget amendment?
Yes, Your Honor, it would.
Yeah, so, so if we got a grant to do that, then we'd simply have a budget amendment to show that income and then the expense.
So it'd be too early to say we'd be getting it now. We don't have. But I just was mentioning that that's something that I would look forward to possibly as an amendment during the year if we could get the funds.
Your Honor, we are looking into those grants.
Okay, thank you. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. The next is Bid Award North Second Street West Construction Report. Public Works Director, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. What's coming before you is a project that's related to the 1% fund, is the reconstruction of North Second West from Pershing to Sunset. This project includes replacement of concrete, asphalt, and improvements to the water and sewer infrastructure. This project was presented to the 1% Committee, Fix Our Road Citizen Committee, at the March 13th, 2017 meeting. This was after we had spent two meetings in project planning. And with the recommendation of the 1% Committee, staff went ahead and began to survey that area, prepared plans, and bidding documents for the North Second West Reconstruction Project. These bids were, or excuse me, this project was advertised on May 21st and 28th of 2017. 14 contractors attended the mandatory pre-bid meeting. Bids were received and opened on June 7th, 2017 with the following results. Patrick Construction at $707,268. Dave's Asphalt at $491,483. 71 Construction at $730,570. And Viper Underground at $597,088. Staff reviewed these bids to assure that they were compliant with bid specifications. And in seeing that the low, the apparent low bidder is responsive to those specifications, staff recommends that the city council awards the North Second West Reconstruction Project to Dave's Asphalt in the amount of $491,483. Currently, the 1% fund has approximately $871,440 of uncommitted funds at this time. Therefore, there is sufficient dollars in the 1% account for this project. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion?
I move to approve.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion. Kyle.
Kyle, what was the, what was your staff bid estimate?
Our estimate on this project, and forgive me, I just went to look it up, it was just under $700,000. So Dawn prepared an engineer's estimate on this. And without having right before me, I remember it being in the mid-600 range, 650 to 700,000.
And so they came in that much lower, huh?
Your Honor, that is correct.
My, I guess that's my concern. I know you've vetted the bid and everything, but it's just concerning to me when you see this big of a spread between low and high. And I guess, just make sure they get it done the way they're supposed to and, you know, I guess, good for us. But Dave's Asphalt's been a responsible bidder in the past, right?
Your Honor, that is correct. They do several projects with us over each year.
Yeah, he's got a good track record and quality work and so... Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. Okay, the approval of the 2017-18 Wind River Visitor Council Budget Plan. I'm trying to get that to come up here. The chair would entertain a motion. I've got a choice here. The chair could entertain a motion to remove the proposal from the table or the chair would entertain a motion for the approval. So I'm not sure where we're at on that. Have we, have they given us a final budget yet?
Your Honor, we have not received a final budget of this.
Your Honor, I would make a motion that we table that till we get a budget.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
It's our...
And it already tabled?
Yeah.
Well, it's, when we table it, it comes up the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay? So we're going to table it to our next meeting. So are we re-tableing it? We're re-table, we're going to re-table. We're going to table it. So it was already brought up, been tabled. Right. We're continuing to keep it tabled until we get a budget. Until, until, until we get a final, okay?
I would think we need to get somebody to come and address this with us. Do you have any ideas, Courtney, in terms of, are we ever going to be able to vote on this in the future?
Well, I would, I would hope so. I don't know what the council is looking for, I guess.
I'm thinking that, well, okay, well, what we're looking for is, is some interest in the Wind River Visitors Council in air service marketing. And we haven't seen that yet. And, but what happened is that, that three weeks ago, there, a month ago, we got the budget from them, a preliminary budget, and then we said, well, but we don't see anything in here for marketing. And they said, well, it's just preliminary. And we said, well, then we'll wait to see the final budget. Because they haven't, and then they haven't managed to pull a quorum together for a meeting since then. They've scheduled several. Okay? And so then I thought FAST was going to go talk to them and has that, or is their meeting on Thursday?
Your Honor, FAST had representatives at their board meeting this last Thursday.
Last Thursday.
That's correct. And the Wind River Visitor Council did review their budget. However, they did not finalize their budget at that time. They decided to make a budget committee from their Wind River Council. And at this time, I do not have a, an estimate on when they plan to finalize their budget.
Okay. So that... So Courtney, you still have a question?
Well, Your Honor, I might make a suggestion to the council. Do you move it from the table and postpone it? Are they going to come back in July? Are they going to come back in August? I think it may be more efficient for the council to just postpone.
Instead of putting it on the agenda every time?
Yes, Your Honor.
Well, Courtney, in going over that, we get the lion's share and the lamb portion return. And I just don't see the, there's equity there on that budget that they've proposed. I mean, how do we get them to comment? I think, I think Courtney's right. We just wait for them.
Mike? Could you clarify for me what, so each city that is involved in this Wind River Visitors Council approves the budget? Or how, how does that work? We're just... That's correct. It's a joint powers board made up of Fremont County Commissioners, Lander, Riverton, Shoshone, and, and DuBois. And they all have representation on the, on the board. And ours is Ryan, Kathy Klein, and Ryan Preston. Kathy Kenyon Blair on the Town of Shoshone. Steve Libzett, City Lander Appointment, Mike Anderson Hudson. Ben Verheul, DuBois. Brian Fable, Lander. Lois Wiggerson, Town of DuBois. Shannon Battenhorst, County Commissioners Appointment. So those are the people that are, serve on that, on that board. And we appoint that. And interestingly enough, these guys all agreed to the budget. And, and then, and then, you know, Kathy and Ryan said, well, you know, actually, there isn't any air service money in this. And so they were a little puzzled by that. Now, we did get, see, we did get some TAD funds. So part of this money goes to the Chamber of Commerce. So then the Chamber of Commerce gave us $10,000 from Riverton and $1,000 out of Lander. So there's $11,000 that we got. Sheridan, Sheridan's Marketing Group has put up $100,000 to market Denver Air Connection out of Sheridan. And right now, they put two people on the plane to one out of Riverton. Of course, we have an alternative airline they don't have.
Your Honor...
Go ahead.
As a, as the new guy...
Yes.
Can, can you help me just understand that, are we, are we merely one of the approvers and can do so whenever they get around to it? Or do we have to do it by a certain date? Do they have to approve their budget by a certain date? I'm kind of curious of...
I would, I would think, they're a public-funded agency. I mean, they get tax money. They have to have a budget in place by, they probably have to have an actual formal budget hearing on the third, by the third Thursday in July.
Right.
Okay?
And their, and their failure to do so does not reflect on us? Or, I guess, I'm, I'm not exactly sure what our, our, I can see where our financial part of this is, but what's our, what's our obligation to them? Do we just sit back and wait and that's okay?
Well...
Or do we have to step up and say?
The question is, is they gave us this as a preliminary budget.
Right. Absolutely, I agree. Until it's a final budget, I would agree, we'd...
Okay.
Because otherwise, they're just going to change things after we approve it, which makes no sense.
So the preliminary is sort of designed to let us give input on what we think? That's, that's the idea. And so we've done that? We've done that. And so we're waiting for a final? We're waiting for a final.
So again, I think the best thing would be postpone like Courtney said, but we do have a motion to table, and I think we have all the question on, so it can fail.
I think a motion to postpone, I just pulled up Robert's Rules of Order because I was curious. Motion to postpone would kill it, and, and we could move to postpone it indefinitely until we get...
Until we get what we need, and that way it doesn't keep coming back up on the agenda, because every week, we said, well, this Thursday, they're going to have another meeting, and then we'll get this. Okay, and so we haven't seen it yet.
So I move me postpone this until we get a final budget from them.
One second. Okay, we'll, we'll just skip that other motion that was made and go to postpone. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. Sage View Subdivision, County Platt, Community Development Directors' report.
Yes, Your Honor. This is County Platt, and the property is located northwest of Riverton, southwest of US Highway 26, approximately a half mile past the airport road. It is outside of the city limits, but within one mile of, of the, of Riverton, so therefore we do review this plat. The plat will create two lots. One, the northerly lot, is 3.7 acres, and the southerly portion, where there is an existing crematorium, is located, is 6.77 acres. This acreage of the new lot is well within the Fremont County regulations requiring a minimum of one acre to permit a septic system. There are easements proposed around and between the lots, and there is a 60-foot wide road and utility easement proposed on the east side of the plotted area and through Lot 1 to give access to Lot 2. The Riverton Planning Commission did approve this plat on June 8th, and the Fremont County Planning Commission will review this plat on June 22nd.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to approve this, this plat.
Motion to approve Sage View Subdivision plat as explained.
Second.
Moved and seconded, is there any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. So motion passes. Public hearing for ordinance numbers 17-00, or 013, and, or 17-014. Could we get the report from the interim police chief?
Your Honor, I've decided to pick three more ordinances that I feel are out of date or are archaic. We've talked about some of these. The first one is vagrancy. I have several issues with this ordinance. Specifically, it states not having any visible means or, or of support. I don't know that my officers are trained to identify that. I feel like this ordinance is just not proper. We use it a lot more for panhandling, and so I will, I will say that we even do not use it the correct way. So I'm asking to repeal it, and the state does have a panhandling statute that we can go with that would be more appropriate. As far as the other two on 17-014, I have picked obstruction of crossings by railroads' time limit. Obviously, we have no more boxcars, which is specifically addresses this. A boxcar cannot impede traffic basically for more than five minutes. We no longer have that issue with boxcars here in the city of Riverton, so I feel like that one is no longer needed, as well as right-hand turn at red light. Your Honor, I can tell you that I've been a police officer for 19 years, and I had to reread this ordinance about four or five times, and it still just does not make sense to me. I feel like if it doesn't make sense to me as a seasoned police officer, it probably isn't going to make sense to the general public. Again, the state statute does also have this statute, so I feel like this ordinance should be repealed.
Is there a right-hand turn on red light in state statute?
Yes, sir.
The chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I now declare the public hearing open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes and other applicable laws, and I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourselves. For the record, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? And there being no others to speak, the chair would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded that we close the public hearing, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. I now declare the public hearing to be closed. Would the city clerk please read ordinance 17-013 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed ordinance number 17-013 on first reading, and ordinance amending Title IX, Public Peace, Morals, and Welfare, Chapter 9.08, Offenses Against Public Peace and Decency, repealing Sections 9.08.090, Vagrancy of the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 17-013 on first reading.
Your Honor, I move that we adopt ordinance number 17-013 on first reading.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion. Lance.
Chief, I just happened to read the paper tonight and noticed that there was someone cited for vagrancy on Friday night. Were they cited under, I don't know if you know this, but I was just kind of curious, I read the paper tonight and saw this, that was it, were they have been cited under municipal code, the existing municipal code, or the state statute?
Your Honor, specifically for that one Friday night, because this is still in use, we did cite for that one. I did have a conversation with Captain Byerly, who's the patrol commander, and if this gets approved, that we will start using the state statute for panhandling. And typically, I can tell you even for that one, because we talked about it, it was more of a panhandling issue. Typically, when we cite for the vagrancy, 99.9% of the time, it's panhandling. It's not even truly a vagrancy issue, which was the case in that one.
I'm curious if you can summarize the difference. I mean, you said there is a vagrancy state statute, is...
Panhandling.
It's panhandling.
Panhandling is basically when you have somebody out in front of a business, basically, asking passersby's for money. Vagrancy is basically being homeless.
Right. Is, but to clarify, is there a state vagrancy?
I don't know that if there's or not, I'm not sure.
Tim.
I can't tell you from what, I've looked up on this. There's some question as to whether this kind of statute would even be acceptable. And, and part of it is just the difficulty in enforcement. You, you have the principle of, you know, if you can't even have an officer figure out exactly, you know, can I really prove that this person is leading an idle life? I mean, some Saturdays, I'm probably guilty of this. Rarely, rarely, but, I mean, it's just, you've got so much vagueness in this that it just would be impossible to enforce it. So I, I think part of the idea, though, is, I mean, if what we're really going after is panhandling, then we could either use the state statute, or we could get a new ordinance in place.
Your Honor, that is correct. That would be my next mission, is to try to come up with a panhandling ordinance and see if we can't get that passed.
Well, and if there is a state statute, then we really don't need a Riverton statute, because you can cite them for failing to, state violation, and then it's their responsibility to prosecute them.
Your Honor, I guess I'm, one of the, one of the, I'm not, I guess I'm not opposed to getting rid of this, because I understand the, the being able to cite in, in state versus municipal, but, you know, one of the problems that we have in this city is, is vagrancy or panhandling, or, and I'm, I, I don't want it to be seen as kind of just getting rid of the municipal code in order to avoid having to cite people for being in the park or walking, walking the rails to trails, or if they're, so I'm, I struggle a little bit with, well, what are we going to do instead that really clearly is expressed to the community that, that it isn't that we're ignoring this, it's just that it's a shift in the way we enforce it, you know, make sure we're clear, clear in that, in, in some way, because it concerns me that there's a lot of repeat offenders in, whether it's vagrancy, public intox, or whatever, and, and I, you know, maybe that needs to be part of an overall discussion of some change with, so I'm not sure if whether amending this municipal code is better than removing it entirely, unless the replacement at the state level is, is adequate.
Your Honor, my concern with this specific ordinance, I've talked to Mr. Hancock about it. We both feel like this is a constitutional issue, and my biggest thing is we are not using this correctly, and I just don't feel comfortable with this ordinance the way it's written. My suggestion would be to repeal it and then look for a panhandling type of ordinance
Where are we? Discussion's over, right? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Mayor votes aye. Consideration ordinance 17-014 first reading, railroad crossing and right-hand turn. Would the city clerk please read ordinance 17-014 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed ordinance number 17-014 on first reading, and ordinance amending Title X, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10.12, Additional Traffic Regulations, repealing Sections 10.12.010, Obstruction of Crossings by Railroads' Time Limit, and 10.12.130, Right-Hand Turn at Red Light of the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I would move that we approve ordinance 17-014 on first reading.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. Mayor's comments. I've been invited to attend an open house and barbecue for the Fremont County Alliance Against Domestic Violence. I will be out of town, and is there anybody on the council that would like to do that on June 22nd, from 4:00 to 7:00? Tim? I think I've got invite right here. Okay? With all the details.
Strawberries and watermelons on it.
There you are. Okay, thank you. I've been able to do that in the past, and it's good folks, and probably the chief will be there, and, and they sometimes ask for remarks.
I'm not very comfortable with public speaking.
And, and you'll wa...
Anybody?
And you'll probably get a purple ribbon. Okay, so I even, last year, I even bought a purple shirt just to wear, so a purple shirt and a purple bowtie, just so that I was adequately decked out, and I look at their, I look at their card today, and it's all about watermelons, so I'm just not sure that this is, that they haven't changed the theme.
You come next time in a strawberry and watermelon shirt, we'll understand why.
Let's see, so does everybody, is everybody up to date on the, on the ditch and the flood and all that kind of stuff? We know what's going on there. And, and we've, tomorrow at 10 o'clock, there's a meeting. Kyle and I are going to attend that to kind of show our colors to the ditch company and, and see if there's anything we can do that actually helps them deal with that. You know, they've probably got a big old chunk of canal there, maybe 100 foot wide, that they're going to have to reconstruct in some way before they can get water back down it, and, and who knows, maybe, you know, the rules and regulations that they've got to go through with Army Corps Engineers or something like that, well, if they don't have irrigation water for the next 10 years, I have no idea, but...
2025.
Yeah, 2025, something like that, but they do have a water right, and I think that entitles them to go get the water. And, and so they'll, they'll probably be, a lot of pressure to do that, because people got a lot of crops planted, and, and they will depend on, on that irrigation water to, to come to fruition, so we'll go and see if we can help them. We may have some capacity with loader or dump truck or something like that, that we can help contribute to their, to their effort, but we've offered that previously, we haven't gotten any response back, but we're going to talk to, be there, at least be there and hear their, hear what they want to say. So I will, I'm going to leave town on Thursday, and I won't be back until the 29th. That's the day we have our next meeting, which is a special meeting. It's going to be Thursday night, and we'll, you will use that time to close out the budget, and I think we're going to do some financial stuff too, right, Courtney?
Yes.
Have a finance committee meeting and...
Yes.
And so be more like a regular council meeting, because then we won't have a meeting on the 4th of July. Okay?
Your Honor, did we dispense with the meeting on June 20th?
That was my question.
Oh, okay, so, all right, so I'm going to be gone, I'm going to be gone for that, but we, but how many, how many people can be here on the 20th?
I'm out of town also.
Okay, so Lance, Tim, Kyle. Sean, maybe?
Yeah.
Come on, Holly.
Well, yeah, I'll be here.
Well, we, so we would have a quorum.
Is there...
Are we going to have any business?
To the 29th. It'd make my life a lot easier. Not running back after a photo shoot, that would make my life superb, I'm just saying. No special treatment or any...
All pushing things back didn't, I don't know, it didn't work so well today in my...
I know, it's, it's a, it's a challenge, because we have, you know, our lives are kind of on schedule, but we will have to, we will have to pay bills on the 20th. If we didn't do it at the 20th, then Mia said the 29th would be even better, didn't she? Because she'd have more of the bills in for the end of the year, and it'd be easier to close out the books and all that.
The 29th is a Thursday, isn't it?
It is, it's a Thursday night, that's right.
I, I will not be here on the 29th.
You can't be here on the 29th.
Need to lie, Your Honor.
I'm not going to be here either, Your Honor.
Okay, well. So we do have to have, we do have to have a meeting, okay, between now and the 30th of June.
Yes.
Okay, because we will have budget amendments that we will have to pass.
To finalize this year's...
To finalize this year's budget, to close out the budget.
Will everybody be here Friday, or are you leaving for the weekend?
Not going to be here Friday.
So how many do we have that can make the 29th?
I can be available by phone.
Yeah.
I could be available by phone, but I will not be here physically.
Okay, so on the 29th, are you here?
I'm here.
I'm here. You're here, you're here, you're not here.
So we're probably...
We have, we have a quorum.
Okay.
Okay, if you all, if you're comfortable with us, the remainder of us here closing out the year, you know, what we wind up doing is moving some money from one line item to another line item, so that we don't overspend some line items. Okay, and then we're going to have some, but we'll have to have a finance committee?
Yep.
Yeah, I'll be here.
You're here?
One, two, three of us there.
Okay, so finance is okay, so 29th.
Okay, Your Honor, so our municipal code states that we will hold regularly scheduled meeting on the first and third Tuesday of every month. We will run an ad then that informs the public that the regularly scheduled meeting for the 20th has been rescheduled to the 29th, and the regularly scheduled meeting for July 4th has been rescheduled to July 11th.
Okay.
Our concern is if you wait more than two weeks, we have vendors that need to be paid. So keeping within that two weeks of the 29th is, is our concern as far, you know, from a finance perspective, so if that's okay, we'll go ahead and run that ad a couple of times to let the, the public know.
And I won't be here the 11th, because I've got a wedding to shoot in Cricket Creek. Sorry.
Well, do we need to have the finance committee during the day? We used to do that.
We could move the finance committee if we had to.
Yeah, I mean, to, to get bills paid.
Well, they love to be a regular, because it's replacing the fourth.
So are you, Chair, the 10th?
Yeah.
We could do a finance committee. We could do a finance committee?
No, nope. I lie. Sorry.
10th is a, is a Sunday.
No, 10th is a Monday.
July.
Yeah.
Oh, July.
I'm here on July 11th.
I am as well. I'm here.
So who, let's see, it's, who's on the...
Holly's the only one saying it.
Us three.
Three?
Yeah. So as long as one of you two are hearing, you have one more.
Can two of us do it?
Yeah.
Two of us as a quorum?
Yes.
So we could do the finance committee without you if we had to?
Yeah.
If we have to.
I won't be running in the door. That one, I really will be gone for. Legit.
So, looks like, looks like it works to do finance on the 11th?
Mm-hmm.
We'll have, we will have a quorum, and we'll have a quorum for the council meeting.
So the next meetings are the 29th and the 11th? Is that...
Yes.
After all.
Okay, and then from then on, we're probably back on Tuesday, so we're okay.
Yes.
Back to the normal.
All right. Is there anything else we can talk about tonight, Courtney?
No, sir. I'd just like to express my sincere gratitude to two members of the leadership team that probably spent more hours and minutes and time on the budget than any of us combined, and that is Mrs. Watson and Mrs. Harris. They checked, double-checked, triple-checked, quadruple-checked, and I feel very confident that this budget is error-free and very accurate in the numbers that are presented to you. So I express my sincere gratitude to those two employees, as well as the council being involved. That was a very, very good experience for us. Thank you so much for participating.
It was a good experience for us. Those of us that had a chance to sit in on one of those meetings, got a real feel for the give and take and discussion, and, and have, I think we've got confidence in staff, that they are mindful of their different departments, and they're trying to do the best job they can with the least amount of money. And, and I, and we appreciate the effort that they make. So I think it's a good budget, and we're in good shape. So thank you, Courtney. Kyle?
I really don't think the city of Riverton understands the pressure that those individuals go through to keep everything on even keel. It's a, it's really a thankless job. And myself, I'm very appreciative of what they have accomplished.
So, so I'm, so I'll reiterate my philosophy, and that is that we're supposed to be the watch, the council's supposed to be the watchdogs for the community. And, and my feeling is that we've been pretty well involved in the budget process this time around. We've, we've seen what it took to put it together, and we voted to approve it, and we're satisfied. We have confidence in, in the budget. We're, we're happy with it. And so I, I think we did our jobs. We've really got good due diligence around the council table in the, in the preparation of this budget. And while, and while staff is the one that put it together, we, we were watching over their shoulder all the time. So we feel, I feel really good about it, and, and felt that the process was very open. We got, we got very candid discussion from, from staff and department heads. And, and I'm really excited about the budget process this year. I hope we can, I, I hope we can keep that kind of thing going in the future. It was, it was really valuable. We learned, those of us who participated in it, you know, really learned a lot about the departments when we saw that, each of those, as we came up and revenues and that type of thing. I think it was very educational that we have an opportunity to do that. So that was great. So we're tickled, tickled to death the way that worked out. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded, in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are done at 8:52.